Good morning and welcome to the March 12, 2020 Business Meeting. I'd ask the County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Thank you Chair. First, our staff support today. Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Commissioner Savis is, hopefully will be at the meeting later this morning, but for now is not here presently. Role call, Commissioner Humbiston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start off with citizen communication and I, do we have anyone? I guess it'd be Les Poole. I thought that was a cup of coffee.
I brought an oxygen machine with me today.
That's true.
And I'm Les Poole. I live in Clackamas County. Obviously, there's some pretty serious things going on and you're going to be talking about them today. And I'm not here to reflect on that because I think everyone knows we've got a health emergency. We've got overkill and underkill. So hopefully you'll be real careful and focused about what you do and what you don't do. Today I'll be going to Metro. Every Thursday at 2:00 Metro meets. Metro meets in a vacuum. Metro has not answered a simple couple of requests I've made lately. They're not like you. When you ask a question there, they look at you like you're from outer space and away you go. The questions I've asked are, how much money has Metro bonded and borrowed in the last two years? I got blank stares. Of course, they have no idea. The other question I ask is that on their fluffy webpage about the T-2020 Transportation Project, the one that's gone awry, the one that has a lot of good things in it, but the one that's gone awry, it's gone awry because it's in Metro's hands, of course. It's not in the county's hands. I've asked them to place a single webpage that shows how much money they intend to borrow, tax, fee, and spend to achieve their goal and to put all of the money that they intend to incorporate into this vision on one piece of paper online so we can all see it. I don't know if there's anyone in this room that has any idea really how much they intend to borrow, how much they intend to raise vehicle fees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But Metro is best described as a runaway train. And unfortunately, Metro has the regional planning authority. You don't. It's hard to swallow that sometimes when I tell people that. Metro has the ability to penalize Clackamas County if it doesn't go along with Metro's policies. So I'm here to share a message from the citizens, not from Les Poole. The citizens, residents, visitors, are all being dramatically affected by Metro's doing. And Metro is a runaway train. And my request of the staff, I'm not entitled to demand, my request of you is to stand up to Metro on behalf of us. Because there's really only been one other commissioners that's dared to do that and he's willing to take the ridicule. He's not here today. My oxygen machine, I'll conclude by saying that very troubled by the handling of the cap and trade issue and that there's a far cry between a climate emergency, between taking action, and between instilling a system that will do very, very little to accomplish the goal and at the same time generate a fortune for the state to spend. The belittling of these folks at Timber Unity has been outrageous. Outrageous. If you read some of the things that are being said about Oregonians who were standing up, I'm going to bring this tree every week as a reminder that we're all in this together and that special interest groups and Metro and our out-of-control governor all need to be reined in. And hopefully that'll happen in this year's election. I appreciate the time as always.
Don't forget to water it.
I won't kill it.
Well, Gary, what's up next?
Next Commissioners is a Special Board Action Item, Approval of a Resolution Amending and Extending Board Order Number 2020-09, Declaring a Local State of Emergency and Declaring Emergency Measures. Nancy Bush from Disaster Management will lead, but we have several others here who will also support, including Dr. Sarah President, who is our Public Health Officer for Clackamas County.
It's on. Oh, is it on? Thank you. Yes, I'm Nancy Bush. I'm the Director of Disaster Management here for Clackamas County. Thank you for having us today. So we are looking at the declaration that was signed and actually is still active until Monday. And we want to extend that declaration through June 30th so that we can continue to work on the COVID and making sure that we can move the county forward on those decisions that we're making. So a couple of things just to draw your attention to as you look at the new one, the new resolution. We did add a little bit, we did write this a few days ago, so we did, in that first paragraph with the underline, as reported on March 10, 2020, there are now 14 cases. Of course, that has now grown. And Clackamas County has impacts regarding those cases and the organ numbers are expected to rise. Also, I'd like to draw your attention to on page two, we did add some language there on resources that we're going to be needing from the state. And I would like to report at this time too, we are receiving those resources as we speak. We have some also new orders in, but that has been going very smoothly at this time. But we did add that as well as we worked on our state OHA as well as organ emergency management. Are there any questions about either of those language changes? Okay.
No.
So on the page three, like we did last time, we need to talk about the emergency measures that we would like to check off or impose. I am suggesting again that we go with F, G, and H. And so we can have discussion, that is a board decision.
Any problem with that?
Would you read those Nancy?
Oh, sorry, yes. F is commit to mutual aid agreements. G is redirect funds for emergency use. H is orders such as measures are found to be immediately necessary for the protection of life and/or property.
I have a question.
Yeah, I was going to say B might be the one we would want to since the Governor just announced that.
Yeah, okay. B as well?
And B is to prohibit or limit the number of persons who may gather or congregate upon any public street, public place, or any outdoor place within the area designated as an emergency area.
All right. A.
And I just also want to remind everyone that of course, if we need to revisit this again, we can also do additional amendments in the future.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we go to the doctor now?
Well, first, do you have any other questions about the actual declaration at this? Okay, great. So yes, if Dr. President.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Bernard. Thank you Commissioners for having us here. I do want to just give a brief update on where we are with our emergency response and with the COVID-19 response here in Clackamas County. I believe that you are all aware of the Governor's announcement this morning about imposing some social distancing measures on the county. We discussed earlier when that threshold would be. This is an ever-changing process. I think a lot of discussion has happened around what the right timing for suggesting social distancing is. And I think that although our hospital systems are not strapped at this point, we do want to keep it that way and social distancing measures at this time are appropriate. And I believe that we are doing it earlier than other places. And that's giving us a leg up in helping control the spread here in Clackamas County. I also want to let you know that you, we have just this morning received news that we have our first positive presumptive case in a resident of Clackamas County. To protect that individual's privacy right now, I can't give you any more details about the case. We should have some more specifics this afternoon and that will increase the overall state case count and will also be in a press release from the Oregon Health Authority later today.
Okay. Also, a few other news items is that we are, the Chairs of the three counties are going to talk daily. And before that, we're going to have an emergency, what's our name called? Strategy.
A strategy team here at the county.
A strategy team where we will talk about what we're doing here at the county and then we'll communicate that to the other counties so we know what, you know, that we're coordinating. So this will be daily. We haven't determined whether it'd be Saturday and Sunday yet, but we're thinking that'd be a good idea as per your recommendation. And then we're going to have an email out to staff and stuff which will talk about the situation and what precautions we should take. And the Governor today, in case you did not see it, announced that mass gatherings, your gatherings above 250 people are, will be canceled basically. And Multnomah County, well, the rest of the stuff for our employees you will get. The other thing is that we're going to limit attendance at our business meetings and we're going to provide other ways to access our meetings, whether it's live online right now. We will also probably set up some opportunities to email, text, or whatever so that issues of your concern, now that is up to you. You can attend the meetings assuming, assuming you feel well. Attend the meetings if you like, but we're going to try to figure out other ways to access our public meetings. Along with that, we need to talk about the NCPRD meeting, which is Monday, and whether or not we should have that. We do hear from the community that they probably want to cancel that. And that's my recommendation is that we reschedule that for a future date. And what do you guys think?
I'm fine with that.
Martha?
I'm fine with that.
And evidently, we have talked to Paul and I'm not going to speak on his behalf. Obviously, we have four of us here and we are going to reschedule that meeting and we'll send out notice. And all nonessential meetings, we're going to determine, ask the, well, certainly our volunteers, we have like, I don't know, 50-something meetings, advisory meetings. We'll probably cancel those, but in some cases, the Chair, for example, we have the Metro C4 Subcommittee Meetings. We're going to ask the Chairs whether they want to have those meetings or not. And again, if you don't feel well, don't go to the meetings. And Metro, my understanding is Metro is doing something similar. So we'll send out an email to staff and employees and notify the community the best we can about what restrictions we're looking at and how we can prevent this medical crisis growing. And I want to thank the staff at the emergency, it's the.
EOC.
Emergency Operations Center, EOC.
At the EOC for the work they're doing. We have been open for two weeks, right? And I know that our doctor here has been working a lot of hours as well as Nancy and a lot of staff. So I appreciate the President and the state of Oregon. Looks like they're going to help us pay for that, we hope, because it's not, it's expensive, but it's also very critical at this time that we work closely together. So thank, I want to thank everyone who's doing the work that is helping Clackamas County stay safe.
Thank you.
I see I've got, who was first? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make it clear to the general public that in exercising the state of emergency measures that are before us currently, that this is not something that's going to be done unilaterally by some individual, but the Board, the Doctor, EOC, the administration will be involved in this decision-making process so that it's not overbearing. Obviously, we want to err on the side of caution, but we do recognize that people have rights and we don't want to be overbearing about this, but we do want to make sure that we do the best that we can to protect people's health in any way that we can legitimately do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I use a prop?
Thanks Chair Bernard. I had Chair Bernard make sure he was three feet away from me to honor the recommendation for social distancing, which I think we all need to be conscious of, to do that, to just be respectful and to just really help prevent this situation from being that that has, that happened in Italy where the whole country had to shut down. And that's really what our goal is, is to keep, we know this is going to spread, we know we're going to have more cases, but if we can keep them from spiking, then we will not overwhelm our health systems and we will be able to manage this until we have a vaccine. So that is the goal. I was hoping that, I see that Richard Swift is here, I was hoping that he could talk about what the plans are regarding more vulnerable populations, the homeless population, people that we are serving, how we're reaching out through, we do a lot of services for seniors and people with disabilities, what our messaging is, how we're reaching out to those particularly vulnerable populations and trying to stay ahead of this crisis.
Okay, thank you. Richard Swift, good morning to the Chair and the Board. In regards to this crisis with our most vulnerable populations, you know, people who, for example, when you look at the Veterans Home in Lynn County and the two cases they have there, you know, what is their response? You know, I think that when you get cases like that, what you know is that it's already in the community. And so they've isolated, our most vulnerable population is the ones that we're the most worried about. We've been pushing information to in terms of skilled nursing facilities, et cetera, regarding identification. A big piece of this is staff who are not feeling well, not showing up for work, people who look like they're, you know, coughing or sneezing, displaying symptoms, immediately masked up. And so we're doing what we can with there. We're also beginning to set up and strategize, how do we work with the houseless population? How do we respond to the houseless population? We have, as the Board knows, in the tri-county area, a large number of homeless. And so we know with that population, they're very vulnerable, there is a lot of close contact, so questions of quarantining and isolation become paramount. So I've actually, this morning tasked a staff person to the EOC to begin looking at, and they're in the operations of the EOC, working with logistics about, is there land available? Are there empty large buildings available where we can begin to look at, how do we do quarantine? How do we do isolation? This is work though that will occur in conjunction with both Washington County and Multnomah County. Because they are also, as Cherokee Forey noted, you know, they have a large houseless population in Multnomah County. So that is actually our biggest worry. You know, our population at the Manor in Milwaukee, you know, another population that keeps me awake at night, you know, what we've done there is we've moved in and have been educating the residents. We have signage posted, we have hand washing, you know, Parel stations. And actually now we've ramped up, I talked to Jill Smith yesterday about this, we're ramping up our cleaning because I think as we're learning more and more about this virus, we're understanding the importance of surfaces and the cleaning of surfaces and educating people to not touch as little as they possibly can. You know, reminding, I think it's okay to remind staff, don't touch your face. When you see people touch your face, I think it should be okay to say, don't touch your face. Because really, the reality here with this response is about our responsibility to protect those around us. If we are focusing on protecting those around us, then actually protecting ourselves becomes a lot easier. And so that's the message we're pushing out to folks. We have a lot of work in front of us. We have a lot of work in front of us. I wish I could say that the United States was absolutely on top of this. When it first started, that was not the response unfortunately, so we're playing some catch-up. But I think that what we're seeing in the tri-county area is some outstanding collaboration in regards to information sharing. I think the next step for us, because I am worried about this, I've talked with Nancy about it, regarding our public health assets and our staff, we're seeing fatigue. And so, you know, I'm having some beginning conversations with my counterparts in Washington County and Multnomah to talk about, how do we share public health staff and our assets and resources as opposed to the counties trying to figure this out individually? You know, an epidemiologist is an epidemiologist and an epidemiologist can do their function and their work regardless of whether they are employed by Clackamas, Washington, or Multnomah. And so I, we absolutely need to do this. Healthshare has a role in this and so I'm actually in contact with the Healthshare Board Chair, who happens to be my counterpart in Washington County, so that makes it a little easy, to talk about what is Healthshare's role in, as a convener in some sort of resource sharing. Kaiser has reached out to us in regards to dollars related to the houseless community. And so you do have the community beginning to stand up and look at, how do we share in this? So there's a lot going on, you know, we're going to be working on how to include the Board, make sure the Board has the most up-to-date information in this and it feels like they are sharing in how decisions are being made. This is going to move really fast.
Yeah, I just want to have a follow-up. I think we have excellent communication with our providers in the community. I've been in touch with Deborah Mason from the Clackamas Service Center and feel very confident with our coordination. Behede Brown has been working tirelessly for our vulnerable populations and really trying to get ahead of things. And I'm also thankful and confident that we have the communication that we do have so that if we do need to deploy additional resources, if some motel vouchers need to become available for some of our folks that are exceptionally vulnerable, our service providers are challenged because they really rely on volunteers and many of those volunteers are somewhat in that vulnerable category themselves and that they're older and they may have an underlying health condition. That means they need to be staying home. So please, you know, you have our support and we will work tirelessly to protect those that are most vulnerable in our community. And thank you so much for all of the connection with folks that are on the ground, really working to prevent this from becoming more of a crisis.
You're welcome, but also it's our, it's our jobs.
Also, Clackamas County is coordinating with all our cities also, correct?
That is correct. And we are, the communication is a key. I mean, you talked earlier, having communication with the other counties around us in the region. Communication is key. We are going to be communicating, we are communicating daily actually with our cities. They get our situation reports as well. We'll probably be talking to Administrator Schmidt too about sending out another note to them now that we know what the Governor's saying, but that communication is open. And we, some of them are calling us on a daily basis to get some information.
Okay, Martha and then Ken.
I just want to thank all of our. All of our staff for all the hard work we're doing. I know that our county is well-prepared to weather the storm out there. A few things that I was just going to suggest is, this is a disease, it's spread via droplets. Okay, so the distance is particularly important. Wiping surfaces down with bleach is helpful because it kills the surface piece. I don't know the, I know that our physician will come up and probably say more than I know about this. And then I know that consistent hand washing for at least, you know, what I've been doing is quite frankly, singing Happy Birthday in my head twice with really scrubbing in-between hands, nails, and you know, and really, really, really just keeping that piece clean will help quite a bit. These seem like very simple things to do, but evidently it is effective in, you know, really stopping any kind of contagion from happening. But no, I know, Doctor, you'll go ahead and brief us even more fully on those kinds of things.
Yes, of course. Thank you. So Happy Birthday twice is perfect. So we really talk about at least 20 seconds of, you know, the vigorous washing gets all the particles off. Just running your hands underwater, luckily for this bug, that even that will help just to sort of flush, flush the bug off of your hands. As far as disinfection and cleaning, we are also lucky in that most of the major disinfectants, including bleach, but also, you know, many of the Lysol sprays, various other sprays and wipes are effective in killing, in killing this virus on surfaces. And we are also lucky that hand sanitizer with at least 90% ethyl alcohol is effective in killing it. So if you don't have access to washing your hands, hand sanitizer is effective for this virus. And I think that we are very lucky for that. We know there are some, some bugs like the norovirus that hand sanitizer does not work for and that can be even more challenging when you are struggling to have access to frequent hygiene and places to wash your hands. So frequent hand sanitizer through, and frequent cleaning of high-touch surfaces. And then, like you said, this is spread through droplets. We talk about six feet from somebody and that's really estimated to be the farthest that somebody can cough or sneeze a droplet. So six feet is cautious. There are some recommendations around three feet, which is a little bit more realistic for how far droplets with the virus can, can go through more normal interactions. Six feet is cautious for people who are actively coughing and sneezing.
Okay. So Ken, after you make your comments, would you make the motion?
Certainly. Two populations, I didn't know if you've contacted or not, but the Veterans Village and Met Clayton Moore, both have populations that are recently off the streets. We, I'm not sure what contacts you have been made there, but we might want to check in on that and make sure they're getting the information that they need.
The truth.
That may be happening, I just wanted to point that out. The other thing is that we all have some significant social media contacts as a result of our positions here. If you send us an email that is information that the public could have, we can be very helpful in distributing that. If you just attach to it, may distribute on social media as a tag, then we'll know you'd like that out to the general public and we can also facilitate that. I'm certainly willing to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, Gary?
Our staff is already doing that through Public and Government Affairs. I would encourage you to share the county's social media post to your personal posts. That'll make it easier for you because we're already doing that and you can just share that information, is my recommendation.
We'll do it. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution amending and extending order number 2020-09, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures.
Second.
In two seconds, the motion is, I move to, we approve the resolution amending and extending order number 2020-09, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring an emergency, and declaring emergency measures. Any further discussion? Yes?
Can I confirm, so you are going to check the boxes for letters B, F, G, and H?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. And Dr. President had a comment too?
Yeah, I did want to just say one more thing around infection prevention. Yeah, I did want to just say one more thing around infection prevention. We do know that increasing testing capacity is coming. We are going to see more positive tests, and we are aware of that. Public health is really working on continuing to work on contact investigations, especially of high-risk contacts, and really working on protecting those most vulnerable. I still want to say, even though we do have increased access to testing, if you do not need to otherwise seek medical care, staying home when you're sick is the best way to not spread any of these respiratory viral diseases around in the community, and the best way to not expose other vulnerable people.
One other question, is there a phone number people can call? And what would that be?
So I would recommend most people with general questions, call 211. Healthcare providers, there is actually a hotline through the Oregon Health Authority, and I don't have that number memorized right now, and then our reportable disease line is available for providers who need to report communicable diseases.
All right, 211. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your support in this.
Thank you. Next is, Gary, what's up next?
Next, Commissioners, you have a public hearing, a board order regarding the proposed withdrawal of county road status from a portion of Audi Street, 98th Avenue, County Road Number 2447. Presenting is Doug Cuts Hall from Transportation and Development.
Good morning.
Good morning. It is a good morning, we're here.
Yeah.
So we're withdrawing the status of Old Audi Street to make it a local access road as part of the project, the realignment of Audi Street. We intentionally left that portion of Audi Street, Old Audi Street, to provide access to adjoining properties. And so we're here to hear any testimony against it or for it, and I don't know that anybody's here to protest it.
All right, thank you. So with that, do anybody have any questions on this matter? We did have a work session or policy session about this. With that, I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order regarding the proposed withdrawal of county road status from a portion of Audi Street, 98th Avenue, County Road 2447.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the board order regarding the proposed withdrawal of county road status from a portion of Audi Street, 98th Avenue, County Road 2447. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Gary, what's the next item?
Next is another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another public hearing, which is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Clackamas County Code, Chapter 8.02, Transient Room Tax. Our presenters are Haley Fish from the Finance Department and Andrew Naylor from County Council.
Thank you for coming today.
Hello, thank you Commissioners. We also had a policy session on this, and this is, so we are doing changes to Section 8.2, the transient room tax code. These changes, in summary, are adopting general neutral language throughout the ordinance. The changes will allow operators to retain the collection expense of 5% of the tax owed. It increases delinquent interest amounts from 0.5% to 1%, and adds a severance clause. One of the other main things it does is it clarifies the definition of incident use to a personal rental is not an incidental use to an owner's own use if the private home, vacation cabin, or like facility is publicly advertised for rent. So that is key as it will simplify our language to allow us to potentially enter into voluntary agreements with online travel companies. And there was some discussion about oral versus written public advertisement. The way it is written, we do not believe it precludes oral publication from being considered a violation, it will just make the burden of proof much harder to attain. We did speak to some other local jurisdictions who did not have any guidance as to written versus oral, and we have checked with our own code enforcement team, and since this is not currently a code, or in the code, the short-term rental isn't in the code, it wouldn't be a violation at this time, and so we don't have any evidence that we're getting many claims or complaints on short-term rentals that are publicized by word of mouth. But again, the current language wouldn't preclude us from pursuing a violation if that were the case.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that covers it. I have one small correction from the version that you have in front of you. In Section 8.02.060C, the version you have says, "A personal rental is not incidental to an owner's own use if the private home, vacation cabin, or like facility is publicly advertised for rent by the owner or any other person or entity, including, but not limited, comma." It's missing a "but not limited to," there's one word off there, so we're making that correction. So I just wanted to flag that.
Would you take us back to that? I'm trying to find it so I can follow what you are saying.
Sure, I'm sorry. It's 8.02.060. Unfortunately, I don't know what page in your packet that is, but it's subsection C.
Yes, Page 6.
And which paragraph and line are we talking?
Subsection C, it's the added language as to defining the incidental use exemption. There's a part of that sentence that says, "including, comma, but not limited." In your version, it just has a comma, but it should read, "but not limited to, comma." So we're fixing that as well.
You got that?
Yep, that's what happens when you type too fast.
I know.
You got that?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? That, I'll open the public hearing, and I have Les Poole would like to speak on this matter.
Yeah, Les Poole, Gladstone, because this is a public hearing. I don't see folks here. And what I mean by that is, I don't see business owners, I don't see those most affected by what we're doing here really that involved. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but originally this was scheduled for just one reading or something to that matter, and my message to you today is, I question the amount of outreach that goes on in this county, and others are showing up and doing that. Got up this morning, I watched, turned on the TV, and I turned it on Channel 30, only so I could record myself and watch myself afterwards to decide whether or not I made sense. And before the meeting, of course, was the wonderful ads and promotions for the dogs. And there's one thing that the promotion of the animals and the dogs proves to me here in the county, you folks are capable of doing much more outreach than you are. And I would suggest that this issue be delayed until adequate input from the public occurs. I'm not so much opposed to it as I'm opposed to the process. And once again, we're in an empty room. This so reminds me of how we got our vehicle registration fee. So again, I would suggest and ask that this be delayed until there's more input from those affected. Those affected are the folks who will be collecting the tax from their customers. So I would again suggest that we're not ready. Thank you.
So this is a meeting with the first reading, there will be a meeting with the second reading.
Yes, sir, that's correct. All ordinances have two readings.
Unless it's an emergency.
Or fees and fines, but our typical adoption process has two readings 13 days apart. This process has been going on for four, five years. This is separate from the short-term rental legislation as well.
And we've had a lot of input on short-term rentals.
Yes, sir.
In fact, I've lost count of the meetings. All right, so with that, no other people? We'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion, or entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We moved in second, that we read the ordinance by title only. All those in favor, say aye. Wait, do you have to read the title first?
No.
No, after we vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
All right.
I'm abstaining as well, primarily because I was absent for the first part of this, so.
Yeah, we did have a work session on this issue, okay. So at three, yes, and two, abstain. So motion carries. And with that, I'd ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 03-2020, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 8.02, Transient Room Tax.
Any further discussion? So with that, I will announce that the second reading will be Thursday, March 26, 2020, at a board's regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title. Thank you.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan District of Oregon for special transportation formula funds for the Mount Hood Express Bus Service, dedicated dialysis rides program, and match funds for Title 19 Medicaid non-medical waivered transportation, and approval to purchase a total of two buses, one Category E Transit Bus from Creative Bus Cells and one Category D Bus from Creative Bus Cells for the use of transportation reaching people and the Mount Hood Express service. Under the Department of Transportation Development, approval of a 2020 Fund Exchange Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the South Upper Highland Road Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under County Council, we have a board order for formal approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, zone map amendment, and site plan review request for a mining operation located on the west side of South Barlow Road, south of intersection of Barlow Road and South Highway 99E. This was a land use hearing that you approved on February 5, 2020. Under Community Corrections, approval of blanket purchase agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the Department of Veterans Affairs, National Cemetery Administration to provide work crew services, and under Clackamas County Extension and 4H Service District, approval of easement at the North Willamette Research and Extension Center providing Portland General Electric access to install electric service for new irrigation wells. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
So I almost asked, is this that one agreement for buying blankets?
No.
Anyway, with that, any questions or any item, anyone would like to remove from that, from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, go ahead, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I just want to remind folks one other thing, that we are canceling the Monday NCPRD board meeting at the Concord School, right? And we will reschedule that when the time is appropriate. And Gary, county administrator updates.
Yes, Commissioners, of course, as always, I do want to thank our staff who is continuing to work above and beyond the call of duty to support this COVID-19 coronavirus in Clackamas County and the state. We have staff that have been working in our emergency operations center nonstop for almost the past two weeks, and they will continue that effort. So I thank their staff for their really phenomenal work to support the county and our public. And with that, as I know you will agree, Commissioners, our priority is to make sure that our public is safe and healthy, and everything we do will evolve around that, but also the business of county government goes on so that we can serve and support our public as well. So as you mentioned, Chair, I'll be sending an employee message after this meeting to our employees to give them guidance and reassurance that we want to protect their safety and health as well while we continue to serve the public. But with that, the business of county government does go on, and I'd like to share some good news that our Water and Environment Services Department has done just this past weekend with the cosponsorship of the 22nd Annual Watershed Wide Cleanup. This event is in the Johnson Creek Watershed Council's largest event of the year. 330 total volunteers working at 10 different locations planted more than 6,300 native trees and shrubs, and removed five acres' worth of invasive plants. This event's goal is to restore, repair, and clean Johnson Creek. Many Water and Environment Services employees took part in this cleanup, and this supports the county's strategic priority of honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. So thank you to our staff and Water and Environment Services. That is my update.
Thanks. And Paul, I'd like to give you a little update on the extension of the emergency ordinance. We added a Section B, which is, the governor today announced the meetings over, gatherings of over 250 should be canceled, and so we marked that item, and then we voted on this, and it passed. I just want to make sure you knew about that. All right, so up next is Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything to add, other than what we talked about during the emergency declaration.
Thank you. Paul?
Well, I know that we have another engagement here shortly. I'll be brief, and I would probably going to watch the meeting that I missed. Sorry, I had to take my sister to a doctor's appointment, and I was struck. Actually, this whole morning's been kind of surreal. Actually, it started yesterday, but when I went to Starbucks this morning, I think I was the only customer that walked in out of the door the entire time I was there. That is quite contrastly different than normal. And this morning, I went to the doctor's office, and we were leaving. The doctor had asked us, if you want to, you can take these two forms, and basically the forms are basically designed to carry on any further appointments via video in case that there is a shutdown of the offices and facilities. So I think a lot of people are wisely taking precautions, and yesterday I took a lot, some phone calls about meetings that ought to be canceled, that should be canceled, because a lot of our people that are active are, you know, of different ages, are vulnerable ages. And so we also have to remember that, as I had to tell my son the other day, yeah, you're young, you're healthy, but you can still be a carrier. You can still, and you have to be considerate of your grandparents and other people that might be vulnerable, or even people, just because you're younger doesn't mean you're insulated either. So I think it's wise to err on the side of caution, and everyone be careful, and I'll, again, I'll look at the, watch the video of this discussion this morning, and I would have concurred with the vote on that issue as far as checking that other box and changing the emergency ordinance. With that, all in there.
All right, thank you. I went to dinner last night at a restaurant you usually can't get in, and no one was there. But please, support our local businesses as much as you can, and, you know, go out to dinner. Just don't go if you're sick. And take precautions. I mean, there were hand wash stations in that restaurant everywhere, so, and gloves too. So they're all working at it, but support your local businesses. Martha?
Yeah, I don't have much to add either, other than just to tell folks to practice good hygiene habits. I think that's really the one thing that is going to make a very direct difference. And also to try and eat well, make sure that you- And also to try and eat well, make sure that you have things on hand in case you have to be quietly in your home and not out in the public. And really, just be careful and have healthy habits. That is the best way to prevent infection at this point. And small changes in how we do things can make a huge difference, I think, in how we treat this particular issue that we're dealing with now in public health. So be safe out there, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Martha. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Think like my colleagues, I'll just forget about weekly comments and just go straight to the dog, and we'll take care of that first thing. A quiet home, a soft bed, gentle and encouraging human family members. Those are the things dreams are made of. Introducing Squish. She would really hope you will help her dreams come true. She's a soft-spoken lady who would love a loving home to call her own. She didn't feel a lot of love in her previous home, and she's a bit nervous about loud and new spaces because of that. She is dreaming of a home that will be on the quieter side with a family who will spend time with her, teaching her to be brave and that new things aren't scary. She loves nice scratches and pets and cuddling up with her trusted friends. She just knows that could be you. For more information about Squish or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted, because Commissioner Savis wasn't here, that we are going to have daily strategy meetings before I'm on the phone with the three Metro Chairs, so that we can make sure that we're coordinating what we're doing. And, and I guess that's, that's probably it. You're going to watch the video anyway. But I also wanted to recommunicate something we said last week, that we are aware of reports that some in our community have been experiencing marginalization, or in some cases, discrimination, in their effort to seek medical attention in connection with the virus. This is unacceptable and contrary to our values. Fear of an outbreak has fueled inappropriate behavior in the weeks since the first case of the virus. It's important to distinguish legitimate and appropriate medical precautions from racist and discriminatory behavior. Clackamas County values racial equity and social justice. Our responsibility is to provide a welcoming, safe, inclusive environment where every community member can safely access services and care. This is especially important at a time when fears about the virus can too easily foster suspicion without regard for facts. Please, especially at this time, remember to treat everyone in our community with respect and recognize the dignity and humanity for everyone. With that, I also wanted to mention that, Paul, that we are going to ask people, we're going to provide other options to come to a meeting, video, FaceTime maybe, text messages, emails, so that people can participate. Of course, they're welcome to come to the meeting, but our recommendation certainly is if they don't feel well, don't come. But we're going to provide other tools to access that. And then later today, Gary and staff will be sending out an email to the rest of our employees on some recommendations or restrictions on travel and other items that were also addressed today by other folks at the conference with the governor.
Yeah, if I may, just build on that. Thank you for that. I just wanted to say that I guess we're going to have to somehow grapple with, especially when it comes to hearings and hereon out, the things that we do, how we ensure adequate public engagement and outreach. And I think we're going to have to think about that a little bit, and make sure we're doing it. And I think people that would otherwise want to come here may not. And I think that is, we rely on people's input, we rely on our committees that do all our work. You have all these ABCs and CPOs, and if that goes away, we don't have the necessary feedback that we rely upon to make decisions. So I think that's something we need to contemplate.
And C4 Subcommittee, we're going to be contacting you about whether you want to have that meeting.
I think we're probably going to choose, I think, we're going to choose maybe to cancel that meeting. All right.
All right. With that, thank you very much, and be safe out there. We're adjourned.
Take care of that, Paul.